Good evening. I would like to call it a order of the Gateway School Board of Directors, special school board meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 23rd. If you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance and apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, Bonnie?
Mr. Bova.
Here.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Here.
Mr. Gottman.
Here.
Mr. Lapsovich.
Here.
Mr. McIntyre.
Here.
Mr. Ritter.
Here.
Mrs. Warning.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any comments from residents on agenda items this evening? Did anybody sign up?
No one signed up.
All right. Before we get to the personnel agenda, I do have an announcement and something that I'm going to ask to be added to the agenda. Honestly, it's with a heavy heart that I read this letter to you and announce that our colleague, Jesse Kalkstein, has resigned his office of school director effective July 17th. Jesse could not be here this evening because he is on vacation. We very much tried to coordinate a time to do this when he could be here, and since he cannot, we have invited him back in August. But I did tell him that I would read this letter this evening. It said, "Dear members of the board, I have been proud to serve on the Gateway School Board of Directors for the past year and a half, so it is with great gratitude and some sorrow that I must resign from this position effective immediately. In doing so, I will be able to spend more time with my family and focus on my career. Being a Gateway School Board Director has been a tremendous experience. While we faced many challenges, we always found a way to collaborate and make decisions that further positioned Gateway as a premier school district in the East. It has truly been an honor and a privilege to serve the residents of Monroeville and Pickaran and the students of Gateway. I wish all the best to the board on their future endeavors, and I look forward to hearing of the continued success at Gateway. Sincerely, Jesse Kalkstein." So with that, I would like to ask for a motion to add the acceptance of this resignation to the agenda this evening.
Second.
So moved by Rick McIntyre, second by Scotty Williams. I don't know that there's any discussion on adding this to the agenda, but...
This is yet, we needed the super majority to add it to the agenda because it wasn't...
Six votes to add to the agenda. Roll call when you're ready, Bonnie. Okay. Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mr. Gottman.
Aye.
Mr. Lapsovich.
Aye.
Mr. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Bova.
Aye.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye. With that, I would like to discuss the replacement process, so I also would ask for a motion to add the replacement of school director's vacancy to the agenda.
Can I make that motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Bova, second by Mr. Williams. Everybody okay with adding this to the agenda so we can discuss? When you're ready, Bonnie. Mr. Lapsovich.
Aye.
Mr. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Bova.
Aye.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mr. Gottman.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So, we've had this happen in the past in the board, however, this circumstance is slightly different. Because Mr. Kalkstein has served less than two years, the board can only appoint a replacement through the end of November. At that time, there will be a special election, and it will be up to the Republican and Democratic committees to nominate a candidate for school board for the November election, and at that time, the community will vote, and it will be a two-year term to finish Mr. Kalkstein's term. So, that's in my words, but I also brought a written explanation of that because it's a little bit hard for everybody to understand. I want to repeat it a couple times so everybody understands this process. If less than two years remain before the former school director's term expires, a person appointed to fill that vacancy serves the remainder of the term. However, if a vacancy occurs during the first two years of the term, the new appointee will serve only until the first Monday in December following the first municipal election that is scheduled for more than 60 days after the vacancy occurred. The first Monday in December in election years is when school directors' terms of office begin and end. In other words, unless the vacancy occurred less than 60 days before the nearest municipal election, the new director would have to run in that pending election in order to serve longer than the first Monday in December. So I hope that clarifies things. So the board has accepted Mr. Kalkstein's resignation. We now have 30 days to appoint someone to fill that position, and that would only be through the end of November. So, with that, I would like to ask if there are any motions to add a replacement to the vacant seat of Mr. Kalkstein. Mr. Lapsovich?
Thank you, Mary Beth. Yeah, I have a nomination for, I feel in my heart, a great candidate. She'd been on school board for a few years. She did an impeccable job. A lifelong, almost a lifelong resident of Monroeville. I'd like to nominate Don Neely.
Have a nomination for Don Neely for school board?
Second.
Do I have a second for discussion? Second by Mr. Gottman.
Sure, discussion. Will there be any other folks stepping forward that the board could interview over the next 30 days to see if we might find other replacements out there that we haven't yet identified?
I think that that's up for discussion right now, in my opinion.
Right, so...
I think it is pertinent for the board to fill this position quickly so that we don't miss a beat. If we put somebody in quickly, we are following the guidelines of the PA school code, and that person can step in right away, and we leave this in the hands of the Republican and Democrat committees. And might I add, too, that if there's a third-party candidate, they can contact the Elections Bureau and find a way to get on the ballot if they are not one of the two major parties. So to me, this is us trying to do due diligence of keep things going here, keep business rolling, and allow the voters to decide who their candidates are going to be in November. Anybody else?
It's important, yeah, I agree, it's important that the board be able to have someone fill the seat and keep moving forward, but on the flip side of that, we want to find the best candidate we can, and so I think it would behoove us to try to do whatever we can to...
Balance the requirements of the board to move forward quickly and the need to be transparent. Now, that's a tough thing to do, and the school code, as interpreted, you know, it can be interpreted two different ways, and by many of the school boards in Pennsylvania and across the nation, they have interpreted according to the need of the moment, the need of the district. So I think the school board is free to pick the protocol that we will follow and then follow that. So, my question to us, to the school board, is what protocol will we follow? What will be the rules of selecting someone? So right now, we have a nomination that has been seconded, is that true?
It's been seconded. We're having discussion right now.
So we're having a discussion, so...
Right now is your chance to weigh in on this matter.
So, one of the options we have is to have another meeting in a week or two, and give the folks out there time to listen to this, come down to this, you know, the school board here, make their presentations. We might select the same candidate, we might not, we don't know. Another protocol is for us to vote tonight. Another protocol is for us to go 30 days and not name someone. When that happens, the judge steps in, and within 30 days, they're required, some judge is required to fill the seat.
Right, but by the time that would happen, John, the election would happen, and there would be a candidate elected.
That's what I'm saying, there are a lot of options...
That's not a viable option. We would sit with a vacant seat if we chose that option.
But we're not, it's one of the options. So what I'm saying is there are a lot of options we could choose, so which protocol will we choose?
Would someone else like to weigh in on that?
Well, I would, John, and I...
Sure.
I always appreciate the efforts for as much transparency as possible. The thing that makes this particular appointment unique is that regardless of who we appoint or how we appoint them, this term will ultimately be filled by the Democratic and Republican committees. So, it makes sense to me that those folks, since they will be the ultimate decider of who their candidate's going to be, essentially, you know, tell us, "Who do you want your candidate to be?" So that that person, you know, has a few months to get familiar with what we do and is prepared, if they win the election in November, to continue working. To throw it out open, first of all, gives a lot of, quite likely, false hope to a lot of people to be, to serve this two-year term, and I don't see the productive part of that. I don't...
It certainly puts a more, more of a burden on the school board, you know?
Not really, because come, no matter who we select, come November, the committees are going to decide who their candidates are. So, you know, little or nothing we do is going to affect that decision. I don't know what their decision-making process is. I know this word of Mr. Kalkstein leaving leaked out a while ago, you know, perhaps from his family, you know, their own discussions, but the committees became aware that Mr. Kalkstein was going to be leaving, and they've already informally kind of offered up who their candidate is going to be. So, and both to expedite the process and also to save a whole bunch of other people, you know, just the trouble of competing for this spot. If we know who those two people are, I say we, you know, decide which of them we want to select and get on with business.
I agree with almost all that you said, except the Republican committee didn't have a chance to begin its search until it had received notification that Dr. Kalkstein would be vacating a seat.
Which was when?
That's not true.
There is not time for public comment. Mr. Ritter, can we allow any other board members who might want to comment, so that this isn't just a back-and-forth between you and Mr. Bova?
Sure.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes, please, Mrs. Warning.
With Mr. Lapsovich's nomination, I've known Ms. Neely for quite a while. She knows the way the board runs, she's very effective in when she was on the board, and for the four months that, I would say four months, that would be filling the position, I think it's going to alleviate a lot of the problems, and I think it would be a great asset. That's just my opinion, to have her.
Thank you.
So if I found the effective date, it's the 19th, that would be Friday, so that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, now we have Tuesday.
Okay, that's your opinion, and I would like to still offer chances for other board members to weigh in on this.
Excuse me, what was my opinion? We received the resignation letter Friday, so...
Your, your opinion that you voiced was about the Republican committee, this is a Gateway School Board meeting, so I'm not privy to what the Republican committee has done, and I don't want to talk about that at the Gateway School Board meeting.
Right, so I don't want to talk about that. What I'm talking about is the effective date of Jesse's resignation.
It's the 17th.
It's the 19th.
Well, it's effective tonight. 30 days begins to run from the day you accept it.
The letter was dated the 17th. It's effective when we, what he just said, when we...
Accept it.
30 days runs from today.
Accept it. So we have 30 days from today to fill the seat.
You can fill the seat at any time during that 30-day period.
Very good, thank you. I've been trying to give this side of the room an opportunity to comment.
I've been trying to. Just my opinion, I think we have a candidate in the room that, as Mrs. Warning has said, has vast experience, can hit the ground running. I think with the potentially short time span that this appointment would be serving, I think it's beneficial to have somebody that has that experience. And I appreciate your desire to look at other candidates and to have other people step forward. I'm confident that we would not find somebody with the level of experience and the readiness and ready to just plug in and play that Mrs. Neely presents. And I think that because of the short time span of the appointment, anytime, I don't want to say wasted, but used, and furthering the search is just reducing the amount of time that we have of full board.
Well said.
With... No, no, you're good.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, when we were working Jack, it was for a scenario where he was going to be filling for two whole years, so taking the time to hook all candidates, have a chance to meet with them, that was well worth it because it's going to be a longer appointment.
With this, I mean, I'm agreeing with both Mrs. Warning and Mr. McIntyre, where we have a candidate who has been on the board, you can look at their track record with voting, has been pretty solid, and, you know, with this short timeframe, having somebody who can just jump in, fill the void, you know, for the three, four months would be great, because then at the very end, it's not up to us for the remainder, it's up to the people. So, I mean, we are within the rules of being able to appoint somebody, and I think it would be a good decision to move forward with this. Very good, good point.
Mr. Williams.
I agree, it's just, we need to fill the seat, let's get it done, whether it's Ms. Neely or not, get it done tonight, seats filled, we move on. Then the public can vote wherever they want.
Well, is that, if any...
I was just going to say, John, if you're worrying about the Republican committee, I mean, you will have opportunity to discuss with the Republican committee for who you want their candidate to be on the ballot. I mean, that's going to give you the opportunity to discuss that with them, so...
Can I like to call the vote? Roll call, Bonnie. Mr. Lapsovich.
Aye.
Mr. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
No.
Mr. Bova.
No.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mr. Gottman.
Aye.
Motion carries. 62. Congratulations, Mrs. Neely. Mrs. Esha, are you prepared to swear her in?
I am.
You want to go to the podium?
Maybe to the podium.
Yeah, because then the public can see the TV and hear you.
You're missing Scotty.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I don't have to read anything, no.
That's going to get incrementally louder in here.
Please raise your right hand and repeat his oath after he has stated his name. Aye, aye, Don. Happy to be the office of school director, and elected to be office of school director of the school district of Gateway, the school district of Gateway, county of Allegheny and Commonwealth, Pennsylvania. Someone swear that I will support, obey, defend... Someone swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of this common law. And the Constitution of this common law. And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
We have a...
Attorney Dyce has a comment.
We have a corresponding resolution that's been executed now by Mary Beth. It should stay with the minutes, Bonnie. So make sure that you sign off on it and keep it with the minutes.
Okay. And I just happen to have this in my archives, so it's probably with me.
Aye.
She was hoping I'd come back.
Congratulations, all in the board.
On behalf of the administration, school board, welcome back. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mrs. Neely and the family for many years. Students went through and valued your work over the years and look forward to the next four months and moving forward. And a lot has changed over the last several years, but your familiar faces are still there, but we will make sure that we get you caught up on everything, the emails, board docs, moving forward, and brief orientation for you. So, welcome. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the work of Dr. Jesse Kalkstein. He's done a fantastic job. I've had the honor and privilege of knowing Jesse since his days as student of Gateway High School, and he's brought a lot to this table, and just, you know, over the course of the last couple of years, tremendous asset to the communities of Monroeville and Pickaran, and wish him the best of luck moving forward with his job and everything he's dealing with.
We do, and like I said, he will be joining us hopefully in August, so we can celebrate his service, and he can thank everybody in person. So, it's time to move on to Section D, Personnel Agenda.
Spundard.
Thank you, Dr. Spundard. It's resolved that the Gateway Board of School Directors accepts and approves the Personnel Agenda Items 1 through 6 as listed in Section D for the special board meeting of Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019. Under Section 1, Resignation, we have four individuals. Under Section 2, Leaves of Absence, we have seven individuals. Under Section 3, Transfers, we have three individuals. Under Section 4, Employment, we have four individuals.
Yeah, this is action item.
B, Section B Furlough Recall, we have one individual. C, A Staff Nurse, one individual. Under Section 5, Supplemental Contracts, we have one resignation. Five issuance of a supplemental contract. And under Section 6, Volunteers, we have two individuals.
So moved.
Second.
Move on, Mr. Williams, second by Mr. McIntyre. Comments, questions, for discussion?
Sure, I'm going to abstain on Heather Ritter. She's a relative of mine, so she's going on leave, she's had a baby, so...
What section is that?
That's under number 2.
Leaves of Absence?
Yeah.
I can vote second on, can I, do I have to vote second separately on that, Bonnie, for him to abstain on one section?
No, he can say all but Heather Ritter.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, Bonnie. Mr. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
All except Item 2, Heather Ritter.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Bova.
All except Item 5B, Gabrielle Keuster. She's my niece, by the way, I'm an issue with her, well, minor issue, but...
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mr. Gottman.
Aye.
Mr. Lapsovich.
Aye.
Okay, Section D passes. Section F is Administrative Report with some additional action items. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. Section F, resolved that the Gateway Board of School Directors approves and authorizes the following items, 1 through 11, as listed in Section F, Administrative Report, Action Agenda, at the special meeting Tuesday, July 23rd, 2019. Those items comprised of Item Number 1, Policies Final Approval, approve the following revised and new policies that were placed on public display beginning May 22nd, 2019, as listed below. Item Number 2, approve the Allegheny Unit Title III Consortium Memorandum of Understanding Agreement for Professional Development Opportunities Targeting Specific Areas Surrounding AL Needs, as depicted in Exhibit A. Item Number 3, the Allegheny Unit 2019-2020 Services Contract, as depicted in Exhibit B. Item Number 4, the training sessions for the various employees listed below. Item Number 5, annual exoneration of District's Real Estate Tax Collectors for the 1819 fiscal year, specifically Municipality of Monroeville, Patrick Folkerson, in the amount of $946,639.2 and two cents, and Borough of Pickaran, Sally DeRobio, in the amount of $130,429.26. Item Number 6, approve the District's Received of Federal ID Section 619 Pass Through Funds through the Allegheny Unit Dart Program, in the amount of $1,984, and Use of Funds Agreement and the Preliminary Budget of Expenditures for the 1920 fiscal year, as depicted in Exhibit C. Item Number 7, approve the District's Received of Federal ID Part B Pass Through Funds through the Allegheny Unit Number 3, in the amount of $717,721, and the Preliminary Budget of Expenditures for the 1920 fiscal year, as depicted in Exhibit D. Item Number 8, acceptance of District donations received for the 1920 fiscal year, specifically $1,000 check from Walmart for the Backpack Program at University Park Elementary School, a $1,000 check from Let's Move Pittsburgh Champion Schools Grant Program through Phipps Conservatory and Botanical Gardens for the Drab-to-Fab Program at Dr. Cleveland Stewart Jr. Elementary School, third donation, a $52 check from Spirit and Pride for support of student programs at the Dr. Cleveland Stewart Jr. Elementary School, and the fourth item, a $677 check through Service Marketing Group 3 LLC for the Apples for Students Program at Moss Side Middle School. Item Number 9, approve the District's disposal and/or recycling of damaged and outdated technology equipment for the 1920 fiscal year. Item Number 10, approve the advertisement for the Acoustical Ceiling Panel Replacement at the Ramsey Elementary School, as a capital repair project to be completed during the 1920 fiscal year. And finally, Number 11, approve the District's continued participation and/or new participation to join cooperative purchasing groups, agreements, and contracts as applicable, as indicated below during the 1920 fiscal year.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second by Mrs. Warning.
Comments, questions?
Mr. Shaw, thank you again for always reading the lengthiest bit of the agenda. Just to clarify, just for the public's sake, exoneration of District Real Estate Tax Collectors, explain exactly what we're doing with that, with that motion. We're not saying that we're not going to continue to pursue that.
Oh, no, no. It's a requirement every year of the school district to exonerate their real estate tax collectors. I believe that the tax collectors have 60 days to submit required paperwork to Allegheny County, indicating, for instance, the school district's resolution exonerating of the amount and so forth for it, so we're meeting our requirement with that. The next step in the process is that these over a million dollars of delinquent real estate taxes will go to the law offices of Weiss, Burkhart, Kramer for continued collection.
So in other words, we're not holding the tax, we're not, we're saying it's not the tax collector's fault that the money hasn't come through.
Correct. They made efforts through 12 months to collect those taxes, and these are the ones that they were unable to collect during that period of time.
Anyone else?
Item Number, was it 10, the acoustical tile?
Yep.
I heard somebody mention earlier today that it's replacing actual original tile in Ramsey, which was what, from like 1832?
Ceiling tile in the gymnasium slash cafeteria slash everything else. It's original tile, early 70s, late 60s installed.
This is going out for bid, we're putting this out for bid now.
Correct. Yeah, unfortunately, the type of, specific type of tile we wanted to utilize, it's not the vendor available, it's not on any of the pre-bid contracts out there. So unfortunately, it forces us into a bidding situation, which unfortunately delays it, costs us additional money to advertise, but we have to kind of jump through all those hoops in order to acquire the ceiling tiles.
I guess another question I would have on this is, what you put out there, how much you budgeted it for? When I go out for bids or stuff, I don't let people know what other people's, you know what I mean? I don't understand, because now, they're probably going to try to come as close to 31.5 that they can, so I don't understand why we put that out for public to know what was budgeted. I mean, I understand after the fact, I mean, and you could say, hey, we, you know, we did 31, we budgeted 31.5, and look, we got it for $28,000. So, like, that, that's a little bit of a concern for me, because we're letting the bidders know how much money we have to spend.
Well, I mean, we've already publicly made available our capital projects budget. I said, I mean, this same information's already out there, so actually already in the agenda.
I get that, but a lot of them aren't going to sit there and dig through that. This, it's easy to find, so just curious why we do that.
That's a good point.
Welcome back.
Hit the ground running. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Sure.
On Item 9, the disposable technology. I don't, I don't think it costs that much, but with the line mentioning that it may require us to pay a measure to pick up any recycled equipment, do we have any idea what that ballpark figure could be?
Mr. Brown?
Micah, are you with us?
He's running downstairs.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Did you hear that question?
I did. So the only things we expect to pay for the disposal are things like the large CRT televisions and things that are potentially hazardous, such as old projector balls. A lot of these recycling companies will offset any valuable technology they have to compensate them for recycling the things that would normally cost us if they were disposing for free.
Okay. I like that.
So basically a wash?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions upon us? Well, when you're ready, Bonnie. Okay. Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Bova.
Aye.
Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
B, section B furlough recall, we have one individual. C, a staff nurse, one individual. Under section five supplemental contracts, we have one resignation. Five issuance of a supplemental contract. And under section six volunteers, we have two individuals.
So moved.
Second.
Move on Mr. Williams, second by Mr. McIntyre.
Comments, questions for discussion?
Sure, I'm going to abstain on Heather Ritter. She's a relative of mine, so she's going on leave. She's had a baby, so.
What section is that?
That's under number two.
Leaves of absence?
Yeah. I'm going to abstain on her.
Can I, do I have to vote second separately on that, Bonnie, for him to abstain on one section?
He can say all but Heather Ritter.
Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, Bonnie. Mr. McIntyre?
Aye.
Mr. Ritter?
All except item two, Heather Ritter.
Mrs. Warning?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Neely?
Aye.
Mr. Bova?
All except item five B, Gabrielle Kuster. She's my niece, by the way, I'm an issue with her. Well, minor issue.
Mrs. Sarucci?
Aye.
Mr. Gottman?
Aye.
Mr. Lapsovich?
Aye.
Section D passes. Section F is administrative report with some additional action items. Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. Section F, resolved if the Gateway Board School Directors approves and authorizes the following items, one through eleven, as listed in section F Administrative Report Action Agenda at the special meeting Tuesday, July 23, 2019. Those items comprised of item number one, policies final approval. Approve the following revised and new policies that were placed on public display beginning May 22, 2019, as listed below. Item number two, approve the Allegheny Unit Title III Consortium Memorandum of Understanding Agreement for Professional Development Opportunities Targeting Specific Areas Surrounding AL Needs as depicted in Exhibit A. Item number three, the Allegheny Unit 2019-2020 Services Contract as depicted in Exhibit B. Item number four, the training sessions for the various employees listed below. Item number five, annual exoneration of district's real estate tax collectors for the 1819 fiscal year, specifically municipality Monroeville, Patrick Folkerson, in the amount of $946,639.2 and Borough Pick Karen Sally DeRobio, in the amount of $130,429.26. Item number six, approve the district's receipt of federal idea section six nineteen pass-through funds through the Allegheny Unit Dart Program in the amount of $1,984 and use of funds agreement and the preliminary budget of expenditures for the 1920 fiscal years depicted in Exhibit C. Item number seven, approve the district's receipt of federal idea part B pass-through funds through the Allegheny Unit Number Three, in the amount of $717,721 and the preliminary budget of expenditures for the 1920 fiscal years depicted in Exhibit D. Item number eight, acceptance of district donations received for the 1920 fiscal year, specifically a $1,000 check from Walmart for the backpack program at University Park Elementary School. A $1,000 check from Let's Move Pittsburgh Champion Schools Grant Program through Phipps Conservatory and Botanical Gardens for the Drab to Fab program at Dr. Cleveland Stewart Jr. Elementary School. Third donation, a $52 check from Spirit and Pride for support of student programs at the Dr. Cleveland Stewart Jr. Elementary School. And the fourth item, a $677 check through Service Marketing Group Three LLC for the apples for students program at Moss Side Middle School. Item number nine, approve the district's disposal and or recycling of damaged and outdated technology equipment for the 1920 fiscal year. Item number ten, approve the advertisement for the acoustical ceiling panel replacement at the Ramsey Elementary School as a capital repair project to be completed during the 1920 fiscal year. And finally, number eleven, approve the district's continued participation and or new participation to join cooperative purchasing groups, agreements and contracts as applicable as indicated below during the 1920 fiscal year.
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Mrs. Warning? Comments, questions?
Mr. Shaw, thank you again for always reading the lengthiest bit of the agenda. Just to clarify, just for the public's sake, exoneration of district real estate tax collectors. Explain exactly what we're doing with that, with that motion. We're not saying that we're not going to continue to pursue that.
Oh, no, no. It's a requirement every year of the school district to exonerate their real estate tax collectors. I believe that tax collectors have 60 days to submit required paperwork to Allegheny County indicating, for instance, the school district's resolution exonerating the amount and so forth for it. So we're meeting our requirement with that. The next step in the process is that these over a million dollars of delinquent real estate taxes will go to law offices of Weiss, Burkhart, Kramer for continued collection.
So in other words, we're not holding the tax, we're not, we're saying it's not the tax collector's fault that the money hasn't come from.
Correct. They made efforts through 12 months to collect those taxes and these are the ones that they were unable to collect during that period of time.
Anyone else?
Item number, was it ten, the acoustical tile?
Yep.
I heard somebody mention earlier today that it's replacing actual original tile.
Correct.
Ramsey, which was what, from like 1832?
Quite that old.
Ceiling tile in the gymnasium slash cafeteria slash everything else. It's original tile, early seventies, late sixties installed.
This is going out for bid, putting this out for bid now?
Correct. Yeah, unfortunately, the type of, specific type of tile we wanted to utilize, it's not, the vendor available is not on any of the prebid contracts out there. So unfortunately, it forces us into a bidding situation, which unfortunately delays it, costs us additional money to advertise, but we have to kind of jump through all those hoops in order to acquire the ceiling tiles.
I guess another question I would have on this is, what you put out there, how much you budgeted it for? When I go out for bids or stuff, I don't let people know what other people's, you know what I mean? I don't understand, because now they're probably going to try to come as close to 31.5 that they can. So I don't understand why we put that out for public to know what was budgeted. I mean, I understand after the fact, I mean, and you could say, hey, we, you know, we did 31, we budgeted 31.5 and look, we got it for 28,000. So like that, that's a little bit of a concern for me, because we're letting the bidders know how much money we have to spend.
Well, I mean, we've already publicly made available our capital projects budget. I said, I mean, this same information's already out there, so actually already in the agenda.
I get that, but a lot of them aren't going to sit there and dig through that. This is easy to find, so just curious why we do that.
That's a good point.
What about that part?
Welcome back.
Anyone else?
I have a question. On item nine, the disposable technology. I don't think it costs that much, but with the line mentioning that it may require us to pay a measure to pick up any recycled equipment, do we have any idea what that ballpark figure could be?
Mr. Brown?
Micah, you with us?
He's running downstairs.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes. Did you hear that question?
I did. So the only things we expect to pay for the disposal are things like the large CRT televisions and things that are potentially hazardous such as old projector balls. A lot of these recycling companies will offset any valuable technology given them to compensate them for recycling the things that would normally cost us if they were disposing it for free.
Okay. I like that.
So basically a wash?
Yeah.
Any other questions, Bonnie? When you're ready, Bonnie. Okay. Mr. Ritter?
Aye.
Mrs. Warning?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Neely?
Aye.
Mr. Bova?
Aye.
Mrs. Sarucci?
Aye.
Mr. Gottman?
Aye.
Mr. Lapsovich?
Aye.
Mr. McIntyre?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Moving on. Are there any comments from residents on non-agenda items this evening? Seeing none?
No, I have a question.
Oh? Yeah, come up to the podium, state your name for the record and your residency.
Hi, Mrs. Nancy, I'm a private and private school district. And my only question, well, it may not be my only question, but my question is, why was Mr. Kalkstein's resignation not on the public agenda and the appointment of the new board member not on the public agenda? Well, because if I had been on the public agenda, I would have signed up to speak before y'all made your decision and given you perhaps some food for thought. So I just want to know why it's handled that way.
Well, if I can speak very openly, I'm going to say that I did that as a courtesy to Mr. Kalkstein so that the narrative of his leaving would be controlled by him, not controlled by leaks and gossip that have infiltrated through the school district, the employees and the community. So I chose as setting the agenda to do that, to protect Mr. Kalkstein. So if anybody is unhappy with that decision, I set the agenda and they can talk to me about it privately. But that is the quick nutshell answer that I'm going to give to you.
And I appreciate that, and I would like to put it on the record that, that flies in the face of every promise to be transparent out there. The people should have had the opportunity to at least comment on it, should have been on the public agenda. Mr. Ritter's suggestion of putting it out there and perhaps waiting one week, two weeks to actually take action, give people time to know that this is going on, I think would be a much better gesture of faith.
We thank you for your opinion. Unfortunately, the school code is very vague and we have obeyed exactly what's in the school code. It's that we have as a board, which is the remaining board members, eight, a majority, to decide who's going to take that spot. So the voters can decide who's going to fill it for the remainder of the two years.
And I can understand that, but I'm sure you understand that by appointing somebody now that you are giving them a leg up in that election. And it would have been nice to give that leg up to equal, equal weight to both parties.
Thank you for your comments, Nancy. Anyone else? State your name, address for the record.
Yes, my name is Len Young, Cooper Road, Monroeville. I want to thank the board for really making the right decision, expediting the whole process. I think it was very professional and very worthy of praise. You all did a really good job tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Anybody else? Which two drafts the board?
Cheryl. I see you in there. There's no way you have nothing to say.
Stop antagonizing the taxpayers.
Cheryl Voice, Monroeville. All of you know, I research things. Gateway School District did exactly what they were supposed to do. I talked to the PSBA, I talked to Allegheny County, I talked to the attorney at the PSBA, I read the school code. You want to read the school code? It drives you crazy. They need to amend that, don't you think, Mr. Dice? It's not real clear.
It's that thick.
I know, we need to, I know. Well, anyway, having followed through this, the process was right. A lot of people were confused because of the way we had it happen before when Mr. Bova was appointed. But we didn't have an election coming up before Mr. Bova was appointed, so we do now. So the public has a chance to vote for this, and that's all we should ask for. We're actually have two people, and you, if you're an independent or you're a libertarian, you want to track down to Allegheny County Bureau of Elections, and I talked to them too, nine million times, which I will tell you, sometimes they are very confusing. But if you guide them and explain it to them 60 times, they finally get it. So you can get, still get on the ballot. If you're libertarian or an independent, you can be on there. And the Democrats and Republicans, both, and the Republicans knew, as the Democrats knew, that this was happening because we listened to rumors and take them seriously. And it was unfortunate what happened, happened to Dr. Kalkstein, because he should have had a chance to resign before this hit the public. But I think you did a good job, you followed the rules, the law, and that's what I asked for. So thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Voice.
I just want to, real quick, congratulate Mrs. Voice on her birth of her new grandson a couple of weeks ago.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll close that section of the agenda. Before we adjourn, I'm going to talk about something else that's not on the agenda, but I will ask for it to be on the agenda in a moment. Bear with me. I want to speak a few minutes about school board in general. First, let me say that although we don't always agree with each other on issues, we generally all do have the same vision for the district. And I have no doubt that every person on the school board really cares for the Gateway School District and is passionate about the work that we do here. With that being said, there are obviously misunderstandings about how to carry out our responsibilities. When someone crosses the line with personnel issues or trying to become part of a chain of command, it becomes confusing to everyone and it doesn't serve the district well at all. So I would like to just highlight a couple rules taken from the PSBA site about our role, all of us as school directors. One, a school board's authority is exercised through the collective decision of the entire board acting as a governing body. The law does not convey any power or authority upon individual school board members acting on their own merely by virtue of their office as school director. Number two, school directors are not to work independently of the rest of the board. Number three, they are not to represent interests of a single group or focus on a single issue. Number four, they are to honor the sanctity of executive session. And lastly, they are to recognize the absence of authority outside of the collective board. Now, you're wondering, why am I talking to you about this? Well, I've had multiple school board members over the last several weeks come to me and asked me to intervene as board president in regards to the actions of one of our colleagues. And many times over the last few years, we have dealt privately with this individual regarding actions that the rest of us thought were inappropriate. But when it gets to the point where a school director's behavior is causing the rest of the school board to be unable to function properly because of distrust, then it's time to intervene for the sake of the district. Taxpayers become disenfranchised if school directors are unable to function as they are elected to do, and it's unfair to employees and students in the district. Therefore, public action is necessary for the good of the board and the district. At this time, I would ask my fellow board members if anyone would like to introduce a resolution.
John moves.
At this point, we're going to introduce this as a motion to accept place this on the agenda tonight for a vote. So at that point, you'd make, right?
I was going to read them and then ask for them to be admitted.
Well, we have to have a motion a second.
Do you have to get a motion a second?
Motion to add to the agenda, discussion of school board behaviors and actions.
Discussion of the resolution at hand.
John, so moves.
Second, so now we can discuss and we can open up and.
Well, we can't really, we're going to add it to the agenda now, so we're going to vote on it.
Yeah, we have to vote. We have a motion a second, we need to vote.
Well, it's open for discussion now.
Are you saying that you would like to read it?
Yes, I think now we should read it and then, then we have the vote to.
We have to put it on the agenda first, it's not on the agenda.
Then you can read it.
Okay.
You must have my game. Roll call to put it on the agenda, Bonnie. Mr. Bova?
Aye.
Mrs. Sarucci?
Aye.
Mr. Gottman?
Aye.
Mr. Lapsovich?
Aye.
Mr. McIntyre?
Aye.
Mr. Ritter?
Aye.
Mrs. Warning?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mrs. Neely?
Aye.
Okay, now it's on the agenda. Now, I would like to ask if there is a resolution by board members.
Sure, should I begin reading the resolution?
I think, I'll take the first section.
Great, thank you.
Resolution of the Gateway School District condemning the actions of Ms. Valerie Warning in disseminating and divulging executive session materials and subject matter. Whereas Gateway School District is required from time to time to hold executive sessions outside the purview of the public to discuss and review litigation, real estate, employees and their conditions of employment and possible discipline, and other sensitive subjects that have attorney-client privileges attached to such subject matter. And whereas in order for Gateway School District to effectively deal with such subjects in their entirety, the district is required to discuss such subjects outside the general public purview, and.
Whereas it is generally accepted with school districts across Pennsylvania and Gateway School District that they must be able to trust its directors to maintain the secrecy and privacy of said executive session discussions, all in order to effectively govern the activities and decisions of the district consistent with the oath of office that each board member is required to take upon entry of office, and whereas Valerie Warning has been informally admonished by her contemporary school directors to be cognizant of her responsibility and fiduciary duty to keep executive materials and discussions private, and whereas Valerie Warning has repeatedly and on several occasions breached this trust, thereby breaching her fiduciary duty to Gateway School District, and. Whereas the breach of this trust by revealing such executive session materials and discussions could cause a loss of the attorney-client privilege and possible insurance coverage. Since said actions would be done by the individual outside the duties and responsibilities of a school director, now therefore be it resolved and enacted on this 23rd day of July, 2019, as follows. Number one, the continued breach by Valerie Warning of her fiduciary duty by divulging executive materials and discussions or otherwise leaking such information to employees and to the public is hereby condemned formally by the Gateway School District.
Valerie Warning shall be removed from any and all other committee seats on the Gateway School Board as directed by the President. If Valerie Warning continues to breach the trust of executive session materials and discussions, the Gateway School District shall consider court action consistent with Panther Valley School District versus R. Mickey Angst, decided in the Court of Common Pleas of Carbon County, Pennsylvania, Civil Action 12-1860 suit two, said case was decided March 8, 2013.
Section four, all resolutions or parts of resolutions which are inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section five, if any section clause provision or portion of this resolution shall be held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not be or shall not affect any other section clause provision or portion of this resolution, so long as it remains legally enforceable minus the invalid portion.
Thank you. Are there any other resolutions to be presented tonight?
Sure, there's a second one. Should we vote on each resolution separately or we'll go right into the second one? Here's the second one.
This is a resolution of the Gateway School District condemning the actions of Valerie Warning as a result of her interference and intermeddling with the day-to-day operations of the Gateway School District. Whereas it's the general duty of the Gateway School District school directors to adopt policies, make appointments, purchase materials and establish school board departments, and whereas the Gateway School District administration is charged generally with the responsibility of operating and maintaining said school district on a day-to-day basis, and whereas it has come to the attention of the school directors of Gateway School District that Valerie Warning has engaged in a course of conduct which causes interference and intermeddling concerning the day-to-day operations of the Gateway School District, its employees, teachers and administrators, and. Whereas it is not a vision nor is it within the power or responsibility of school directors to interfere, intermeddle or attempt to control the day-to-day operations of the Gateway School District. And whereas several instances have been reported to the school board directors over the past several months concerning interference and intermeddling in the administration's and employees' affairs of the district by Valerie Warning, now therefore be resolved and enacted this 23rd day of July, 2019, as follows.
Section one, there have been reported to the school board directors several instances of interference, intermeddling, leaking information and harassment by Valerie Warning concerning the operation of Gateway School District, including employees, secretaries, aides, teachers and administrators.
Instances of such conduct have been found in the food service department, human relations department, the IT department, the police department, in classrooms exercising, I'm sorry, Jack?
Exercising control over employees without notice or consent of the superintendent, entering buildings without proper notification to the superintendent, entering food lockers, entering classrooms without appointment with no legitimate purpose, notice to or consent from the building principal's office nor the superintendent's office, leaking information concerning contract negotiations. The continued course of such conduct and actions of Valerie Warning in interfering or intermeddling with the day-to-day operations of the Gateway School District, including those of employees, teachers and administration, is hereby condemned.
Such conduct by a board director is upsetting and repugnant to the moral, to the morale of this school district as a whole.
If such, if such course of conduct continues, the board of directors will initiate policies and procedures which will prohibit board members from having any contact with employees, teachers or administrators without notice and writing and consent from the superintendent.
Section six, all resolutions or parts of resolutions which are inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section seven, if any section clause provision or portion of this resolution shall be held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such decision shall not affect any other section clause provision or portion of this resolution, so long as it remains legally enforceable minus the invalid portion.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
John seconds.
John seconds, would anybody like to open this up for discussion?
Before we go there, I just want to say, Val, I know this has kind of hit me heavy. Would you like us to maybe take a couple minutes before we go into discussion?
I'm fine.
If you have anything you want to say, I just want to give you a minute to maybe.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I would like to say this. I was not necessarily in favor of this method of addressing this until I saw Ms. Warning in front of the Monroeville Council, addressing them and apparently representing the school board. And in her brief comments, she indicated that the school, apparently indicated that the school district has not adequately honored or respected first responders or veterans, and she had a plan for how to do that, which in and of itself is, you know, a lovely thing, but one thing I learned when I first ran is a board member, a council member outside of this chamber and by themselves has zero authority. If there was a totem pole in the community, we are at the bottom. We serve everybody, we have no leverage, we have no ability to set policy or make decisions. You know, the best thing we can do when we're outside these doors is, I don't know, pick up some litter that's floating around. We don't, I don't understand how someone who could be on the board for four years could take it upon themselves to publicly proclaim that, then come up with a solution without any discussion amongst us. So for me, that was the tipping point. And again, I wish there had been a better way to do this, but I think our hand was forced and so that's my explanation.
I'm just going to make a comment. I rewatched that and I know how I did approach that, you know, saying we don't show enough attention. That was incorrect, we do show attention. I had discussed the event with the first responders and the police and the military with Dr. Short and Mr. Avesti. We have had Community Night in the past, which we didn't vote on. This had come up. I know there's another event that is going to be taking place also at the football games, which I know has not been discussed, but has been in the process of being planned. So I apologize, at this time, I will rescind my invitation to the first responders, to the military, and that I appreciate everything you do. I didn't realize it was going to cause this much. And personally, there's other things I'm dealing with right now. And I apologize for embarrassing the district.
Valerie, we apologize for putting you on the spot with this.
Right now.
But the message that we want to give you is that we want you to hear your colleagues, which is why all of them almost read these things, so that you understand.
Understand.
That all of your colleagues want you to change some of these behaviors. We know that you have good intentions, we have tried to speak with you about some of these numerous things, not just that one incident. And we just want a commitment from you that you hear us and that you will try to change some of those behaviors, that's all.
It's fine with me.
If I may follow up, Mary Beth, as difficult as this is for all of us, our goal is to thank you for all the good work that you've done, but you've made it difficult for the rest of us to operate. And so what we, what we really want is to, for you to take this as what it truly is, a way out and a way up. Recognize that the weakness that we all have is offset by the strength of all of us working together, and we want you to be strong with us and not weaken us to move forward, because the people need a strong school board, the administration needs a strong school board. And if any one of us steps outside of us, it's the duty of the rest of us to take them aside, rebuke them, give them training, whatever it is, so that we could all win and serve together. That's our goal, for you to serve and serve well, right? That's our goal, for you to serve and serve well, right?
Bernard Wilson, Mr. Ritter.
At this time, I need to excuse myself.
Well, I know, I didn't know anything about these charges, I'd never seen them till now. I work side by side with Valerie. I know sometimes me and her get our foot in her mouth, but the thing is, I know one thing about Valerie Warner, she has a heart of gold, she will not hurt anybody out there, and she's for the district. I mean, maybe she did make a few mistakes here, but there ain't nobody better on this board with a heart of gold as she has. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
If I could, Mr. Laps, I agree with you 99% there. I think Ms. Morning's intentions are all, they're all true, and I agree with you that her heart is in the right place. Unfortunately, it's the method at which she tries to act on, the feeling she has from that heart, that are at issue here. And my fear is, and hopefully she sees this later, I'm not sure that she actually just heard anything that was just said.
It was a bit much, yeah.
Well, it was a bit much, but then to respond by, you know, the example Mr. Bova gave regarding the council meeting, the announcement of the event is not the issue. You know, it's that she's literally was speaking on behalf of the district, that's the issue.
That's something we never discussed.
Right. And if you're speaking on behalf of the board or the district, it's something you have to come to us about. And if anybody's going to speak on behalf of the board, it's going to be the one sitting there with the gavel in her hand. And as far as, you know, I know she is for the district and for the kids, as we've heard. The reality, though, is that her actions have cost us significant money in contract negotiations in several instances, and have come frightfully close to fairly extensive lawsuits in a number of cases, where because of, you know, a slip of the tongue or just revealing information, really made the, put the, exposed the district for some pretty heavy, pretty heavy fines and compensation, so...
Well, first, school board member, to me, executive session, we deal with a lot of confidential legal issues, we deal with employee issues, personnel issues, contractual issues, people's salary requirements, benefits, all those things that must remain confident in confidence. And I, for the record, I have a sworn statement from an employee who revealed and received information about contract negotiation details of an employee before the actual employee received those. So those kind of actions really need to be addressed, and, you know, this is uncomfortable for all of us, because, you know, we do care about Mrs. Warning. But as I tried to explain, that we need to act in the best interest of the district and for the board to continue to be able to function. And when you can't trust one of your colleagues and you can't speak freely or talk in executive session because you're fearful that information will not be kept confident, that's a real problem, and that has to change. And if it doesn't change, there's additional actions that we can take, and we will. Is there anyone else?
Yes, I'd just like to state that, as Valerie had said when she spoke about me, Valerie and I have known each other for a very, very long time, our children have gone to school together, and she does wear her heart on her sleeve for Gateway, there's no d and zs or buts about it. I've been with her through the, you know, football and cheerleading and the home nine yards. So she does have very, very good intent for Gateway. But I do agree with Jack, you cannot, when you leave this boardroom, you are an individual citizen of Monroeville or Pickarren, just like anybody else. You have no control to be out there making decisions and or, you know, trying to make intent of, in stating anything that comes from the board as a group. So that is something that anybody that sits in these seats and/or for the November election, if you decide to run, I think I've told Mary Beth before, and I've said it to Rick, you know, you can't click your ruby slippers and get what you want all the time. That's not how this works. So, you know, I'm sure she had the best of intent, it just probably came out wrong. And when it comes to confidentiality, the word is what it is. And, you know, that's something that every board member needs to abide by. So I'm sorry to have to vote on this on my first day sitting here, but I've been through worse, so. I hope Valerie reviews this and comes back and starts afresh with everybody.
Wilson, anyone else?
Yeah, Val's heart is a Gateway black and gold, she bleeds it, you know, and her problem is that she can't seem to be able to separate what she shares information-wise with friends and family and employees here at the school. And I spoke to her about it in the past, and she says, I know, I know, I know. And I think, hopefully, you know, this strikes a chord with her, that, you know, she needs to find the fine line of what she can share and what she can't share. But her heart is definitely Gateway, and she wants the best for us.
Could I have one more question?
Yes, sir.
I don't know anybody's heart, I don't know what their intentions are, but when a school board member inserts themselves among personnel and personnel decisions and actually becomes part of the chain of command, it subverts the whole process. Employees who don't have her ear feel slighted and in a position of weakness. And I think that, again, it's, this is unfortunately a necessary step, but somehow I think we also need to discuss with employees what they do or don't have to do relative to school board members. Because maybe they think that if one of us shows up, you know, we have an open forum and they have to listen. And it's not quite that simple. So I hate policy and procedures as much as anybody, but maybe we need to, going forward, consider how we can empower the employees to have the opportunity to say, you know, I'm uncomfortable with this conversation, perhaps, you know, we can address this in a better way, so.
I just have one other, just quick question, though, and, well, Mary Beth or Bill, you probably can answer. With the incoming election and the new people that are going to come on board, do you guys still do the little training kind of thing with them and the orientation so that everybody knows, uh-uh, this is not okay?
In fact, it's mandatory.
This coming December with our new board members, there is a mandatory training for new board members. It's put in there just for you.
Well, it should be for new and old, so you're going to be there too, honey. Sitting right there.
If there's a meeting that involves board anything, Mr. Ritter's there anyway.
But you understand what I'm saying, I mean, I know we did it years ago.
It's comprehensive. I think every board member here sat through an orientation with me. We have virtually every member of our central office administrators reviewed jobs, responsibilities, duties, and how the system works.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good thing.
But now it's mandated throughout the Commonwealth.
So the purpose of this really is to publicly express disapproval, hoping that, you know, that would help things change and would better enable the district to function and the board to function. And we're going to vote to accept that to record, and then that will be, that will be the end of it for now.
We vote on this as just, going to be just one resolution, or is this two?
There's two.
Two resolutions.
There's two addressing two different issues. We have one resolution that addresses the leakage in the executive session, and a second resolution addresses the misconduct and overstepping of the bounds with employees.
So we currently have a motion and a second for each one?
Yeah, we've got to put them together.
It's like taking section A for business.
You want me to separate them out from the vote?
No, I'm just curious how.
So we're going to vote on them as...
As a whole.
As a whole.
Accepting both of the, can I do that? Accepting both of the resolutions into the record. There's really no action in these resolutions, it's just a public statement of the board condemning the actions, and do you want to speak to this at all? Legally, it kind of shows and gives a little bit of protection that says that we're not, the rest of us are not approving of these.
That's right. One of the concerns, yeah, I think one of the concerns was that you might be culpable if you're not pointing this out, and you've done that. So you've done what you had to do under the law by pointing it out, painful as it might be. I think it's appropriate at this point to call for the question, you know, I think less is more, I don't know that you have to say much more. I think everybody's been very eloquent in what they've said about it. Let's leave it there, and let's see how it works.
So I'll give you copies of these, but I would like to do a roll call on accepting these two resolutions to the record.
Okay. Mrs. Sarucci.
Aye.
Mr. Gottman.
Aye.
Mr. Lapsovich.
Aye.
Mr. McIntyre.
Aye.
Mr. Ritter.
Aye.
Mrs. Warning, I'm sorry. Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mrs. Neely.
Aye.
Mr. Bova.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. With that, I would like to seek a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?